Well, good evening. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm serving as Mayor, Council.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Protem.
Jenny Poppy, Councilmember.
Sophie Pope, Councilmember.
Danielle McCann.
Penny, Councilmember.
Amy Niesel, Councilmember.
Is that it? Oh, okay. Okay. Hey, before we get started, are there any information items for later in the meeting? Mr. Samron has one.
I have one.
Okay. So, you know, our work sessions and meetings, too, are open to the public. Work sessions are on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to get input from advisory boards, from staff, the public. We don't take actions at our work sessions. We gather information, and it helps us to form opinions that we can actually vote on at council meetings. So, as I said, the meetings are open to the public, and we do appreciate public comment. Tonight, we're actually talking about the Buddy Attic Master Plan, which is a framework that we'll be using for short-term and long-term planning going into the future. So, there's a lot to cover, and we have representatives of our consulting firm, of the Prab Committee and various other advisory boards. So, I think we'll pause every 20 minutes or so for public comment. How does that sound, Council?
Okay.
Okay, and if you can please remind me 20 minutes or so for a public comment, I'd appreciate it. I was gonna say, for the public comment, if you are in the room when we pause, if you raise your hand after you're being recognized, we ask you to the podium, please state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. We need that for the minutes. And if you are watching on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab to submit a written request, written comment, or you can raise your virtual hand. And after being recognized, once again, we'll promote you so you can speak, but state your name and where you live in the city. We do need that for the minutes. And also, if you're on YouTube, if you are watching on Facebook or Instagram, or what else, YouTube, so many different. Gate, yeah, that's right. You can send an email. If you send that to the email address questions@greenbeltmd.gov, we'll try and pick up on that and respond to your question. So, for the public comment, three minutes, speak on one topic, only one topic if you can, because there are other people that would like to comment. And please, if you could exercise a little bit of decorum, we're all neighbors, so raising the voice, things like that. We try and not do that on council, and we ask the same of the public. So, let's go ahead and dive right in on this work session. Buddy Attic Master Plan. City Manager Samron, you are here. Can you introduce the staff, please?
Just really thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg Bard has been our Director of Recreation, has put a lot of work into this, and along with the Prab and the consultants. Greg, do you want to introduce the rest of the team?
Sure. So, the project team for the city is myself, Terry Ruby, Planning Director, and Kevin Carpenter Driscoll, the Environmental Coordinator. And we've worked with Mahan Riekel. We feel very lucky to be able to hire them to work on this plan. They're one of the premier firms in the area. And this has been a chore of Prab for many, many years, three directors. It goes back, three directors, at least. I have Jake Chestnut, Prab Chair, and Matt Sickle, Vice Chair, Lola Skolnick, former Prab Chair, has been on Prab for close to or over 35 years, I think. Forty years, so, yeah. So, and she can tell you when, I'm not asking you, but she knows when we started working on this many, many, many years ago. So, the ARPA Funds Council decided, hey, let's try to knock this thing out. And through competitive bid process, we were able to contract with Mahan Riekel. I have Scott Scarphone and Anthony Dai. Scott has been with Landscape Design for over 30 years. He's written books, he's taught classes. Anthony has his master's degree in landscape design from Morgan State University. So, they've been great. We've had community meetings. They've taken that information back to the drawing board, put together this plan. You know, I don't need to tell council how many people in this town are passionate about Buddy Attic Park. Many different ideas, many different viewpoints. So, it was a hard chore, but I think they did a good job. It may not be perfect for any one person, but I think it has everything in there that the community mentioned. And one place where we found consensus is that, you know, everybody thought the accessibility needed to be better at the park. So, that was one good thing that came out of this. So, I'm gonna turn it over to our consultants, and they have a little presentation to go through the draft plant plan, and like you said, we'll stop every so often for questions.
Yeah, and before we go there, I just want to emphasize that a master plan, you know, it's something that we've tried to do, that Prab has worked on and focused on for many, many years. So, this latest update was a long time coming, and this process actually started, I guess, about a little bit more than a year ago. And, you know, through the American Rescue Plan funding, we're able to kind of implement parts of this, but, you know, it's more of a framework than a plan. You know, it sort of spells out some wide parameters and some priorities. But, you know, for the public and for everybody in the room and who may be listening, it's not, we're not dictating that this or that is going to happen. And tonight in particular, we're just having a conversation and a work session, but it's more of a framework than a plan. What do you think about that?
So, it's a vision for the future. It's what it could be, and it's what our professional recommendations are to you. So, we envision this as being a plan that gets implemented over a series of years, a series of different projects that you'll take on as you receive capital funding or grant funding, and sort of, if you will, pick off one project over time. The master plan has a lot of detail, but not enough detail to get a project, any one project finished. And that is very typical of any master plan for whether it's an urban downtown, whether it's a new park, or whatever it may be. So, as you begin to sort of peel off one project after another, there will be another consultant team that will come on board to begin to flesh out a lot of the details and work out all the fine-grained nuances that are, as you said, as the framework provides for in the master plan. So, you did a good job of overviewing that. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's dive into the presentation. There's a lot to cover. There's been, you know, a lot of feedback. Went to every single one of our advisory boards for their feedback, and we got some really good suggestions from the advisory boards. So, please, let's dive right in. And first, as we begin, so is this going out on Zoom as well as cable TV, the actual slides? I want to make sure that it is.
It's on Zoom. I don't think it's up on, the slides are not on cable TV because we can see in the window.
Okay, okay.
But the slides are visible on Zoom.
Okay, just asking. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for that introduction. Let's get.
Now the slides are on cable TV.
Oh, cool. So, tonight, we wanted to provide a presentation of our draft master plan and facilitate some discussion, both with city council and opportunity for public comment, as the mayor mentioned, and then talk about what's next in the process. So, we were introduced already, but my name's Anthony. I'm with Mahan Riekel Associates. I'm here with Scott. And to recap the master plan's purpose, we want to provide a vision and accompanying strategic plan for the future utilization of Buddy Attic Park to guide short- and long-term improvements, protect the park's natural resources, and improve management practices. Thank the mayor and Scott for summarizing what a master plan can and cannot do. I think that that's useful to keep in mind as we go through this presentation. So, we're nearing the end of our process here with the master plan. We've gone through several community meetings already, iterations of the draft report, and using feedback from tonight's meeting and various advisory boards that have contributed feedback over the past couple of months. We're going to revise what we have shared as a draft into a final master plan. So, I wanted to recap community input and some of the community engagement that we've done thus far. We've had a robust community engagement process involving three prior meetings here in Greenbelt, a public opinion survey. There have been opportunities online for public comment. And all of these various ways in which we've gathered information have informed our design. You know, we didn't just pull our recommendations out of thin air or assign them due to our own preferences. We were really looking to the community and users of Buddy Attic Park to inform what we put together in the master plan. So, thank you to everyone who was involved in the community input process. We really appreciate lots of great feedback and information we got throughout all of these exercises. So, through all of that community input, we identified a strategy to make enhancements at what we saw as key areas, and of course, along the lakefront path. But the key areas that we sort of identified for enhancement were the main entrance, the South Cove, and the peninsula. So, as we go through, those will be the key areas that we're looking at. So, we can start with the main entrance. There's the most content in this area compared to the South Cove and the peninsula. So, I'll start with this slide, and then we have some enlargements that we can look at afterward. The main entrance area is sort of organized around central lawn and views of the lake. Elements in this area include a performance plaza that could be used as a stage for performances, and we know that there's events and concerts throughout the year in the Fourth of July. But we imagine this as sort of a flexible-use space that doesn't necessarily have, or doesn't have, rather, a back. So, we maintain views to the lake while still allowing for flexible performances and events throughout the year. There's a circular path that sort of connects all of these elements, and we're, we think that we'll be able to achieve accessible grades to all of the elements that are shown along this circular path. And that means less than 5% slopes per the Americans with Disabilities Act. We're also looking at, well, we have included the playground that's currently under construction in this main entrance plan, and that sort of was considered when laying out the main entrance as we've designed it here. And that pathway connects the proposed new playground, which is being built right now, to the existing swings and playground area over here, along with a picnic pavilion. And as you come down, there's a connection to what we're proposing as a new meadow trail, sort of a mown path around this meadow area, a fishing pier down here at the lakefront to allow people to have a closer connection to the lakefront. And as we come up the other end, connection to this picnic grove area that's already being used for picnicking. And here, we would propose some improved picnic shelters, one large one and some smaller ones for smaller groups. You can see an enlargement here of the area that has that flexible, multi-use plaza space that could be used for performances, the fishing pier here, okay? And then a sort of a lakefront promenade, like a special walk here with enhanced lakeside plantings and special paving treatment.
So, Anthony, if I could just add, there were, there's a lot of discussion about the stage, the performance area. So, what we're proposing in this plan is simply a sort of a paved plaza area that has the opportunity to be utilized as a multipurpose space. So, if during special events, you wanted to have, say, an acoustical duo or trio come in there, no stage is needed. It's just a small plaza that's at grade. There's no background. If you wanted to have larger performances where you would require a formal stage or some sort of backdrop or formal lighting, you can work with an entertainment venue that can bring that facility in and position that on top of that multi-use plaza area. So, we just want to clarify, there were a lot of comments about that. A couple of things to add, Anthony, if you could just go back to one slide there. We talked about ADA accessibility. Recognize that no park anywhere is going to have every single path that's going to be accessible. It's our job is to provide accessibility, provide an equitable experience to all people. So, in this particular instance, the pathway to the left, and Anthony can roll his cursor over there, is the pathway that is technically accessible. That means 5% grade or less. The pathway on the other side is technically considered not fully accessible because there are portions of it that exceed 5%. So, just to clarify that. The last clarification was some of the comments. There were a lot of comments that talked about the plan recommending lots of trees to be removed. The plan doesn't recommend any trees to be removed. In fact, the plan actually recommends certain areas be reforested along the edge and new trees to be planted. So, just to be clear on that, specifically in the area where we're proposing the new picnic pavilion, those of you that have walked that area know that it's a fairly open wooded area. It's not very densely wooded. So, the pathways that we have proposed would go through that area very delicately and kind of weave through the existing tree canopy. Now, there may be one or two trees that need to come down along the way, but generally speaking, that area is fairly open right now. So, the pathways would be very easily to sort of lay in that area. So, those are just some highlights to kind of pick up on some of the comments that were given to us, just clarify a few things.
Thanks, Scott. And this is the area that Scott was just mentioning. As you can see maybe a little bit better in this enlarged photograph, it is relatively open compared to some of the other wooded areas on site. And as Scott mentioned, we would, our recommendation would be that any paths through this area be planned, as he said, delicately, so as to be compatible with the existing trees in this area.
The pavilion that would be provided is one of our recommendations, as we knew we have a lot of picnicking activity that goes on here. And some of the smaller pavilions just aren't, well, they're not big enough to accommodate larger crowds. So, our recommendation is to put two new pavilions in that would be a little larger of size, that could be rented, to provide some revenue that would accommodate some of these larger picnic crowds.
Last enlarged area here at the main entrance is the proposed mown path around what we're proposing to be a meadow here on the downslope side of the lake's dam. And similarly, we would recommend that any proposed path through this area take existing trees into consideration as it's aligned. This is just a high-level drawing, and this may not be the exact alignment of the path. Our recommendation would be that any future path be sited according to a variety of factors, including the maintenance of existing trees wherever possible. But we do cross the creek here, the outlet from the lake. So, a small footbridge would be required to pass over that. And, yeah, we're recommending meadow plantings on the downhill side of the dam here that the path winds around.
And the other thing is, we are recommending several areas where meadow plantings are implemented for a number of different reasons. One is it's an aesthetic. It is a trend that a lot of parks departments are implementing to reduce mowing times. So, these meadows can be done in a number of different ways. They can be done either as just lawn grass that is allowed to mature and it's mowed once a year, or it can be seeded with the meadow mix. Now, keep in mind that a meadow mix is not a wildflower garden. It is a meadow mix that's predominantly comprised of 70-plus or minus percent grasses with some pollinator species that are intermixed. So, depending on the selection of the mix, that can vary depending on the use. So, that particular mix is something that's going to be defined later on, once you get into the nuances. The same thing, there were a lot of comments about, we didn't provide a plant list or a tree list because we're not at that level of detail right now. So, that'll be something that, once you get into implementation, the exact matrix of that meadow will be determined at that time.
So, as we move into the South Cove area, our concept for this area is primarily sort of revolving around a stepped terrace that takes advantage of the existing grade change here, the slope down to the lake, to provide a stepped seating area, sort of a, having the character of natural stone and boulders stepping down to the lake in sort of this amphitheater pattern that would allow people to sit at various levels and observe the lake. And so, there would be an accessible seating area up top, and then a lower seating area down toward the bottom of this terraced area. That would be aligned with central lawn here, labeled by A, and mixed-bed plantings on the edge here that border that area. And these areas here labeled G, we're recommending that the existing wetland areas here be restored. We know that this is an area that a lot of people identified as a part of the park that they would like to see some attention given to. It stays wet there pretty often. You know, exact recommendations for the stormwater management of this area is not necessarily within the scope of our master plan report, but we would recommend that whatever issues have led to standing water remaining there be investigated and addressed. Got anything to add on South Cove?
Good job.
Now for the peninsula?
Yes. So, the peninsula area is, has a really unique character here in the park. You know, it's unlike any other space where you can be surrounded on all sides by the lake. And we want multiple small groups of people to be able to experience the peninsula, so we're recommending some small lakeside seating areas, put together with boulders that would allow for individuals and maybe groups of two or three to come and sit down by the water's edge. And closer to the main path, as you come off the peninsula, we're recommending a small overlook deck, reduced in size from what we had previously shown, that would allow folks to look out over the fore bay here. We know that this is an area where watching wildlife and observing some of the animals in the lake is very popular, and we wanted to sort of frame that opportunity for visitors. And I think we have here for the peninsula, connections to the existing lakefront path on all sides.
So, a couple of things to add, and thank you, Anthony. So, in the area outside the peninsula, every, everything that we're proposing would be sort of, the landscape design would be very naturalistic. So, there's already a precedent that's set on, what is that? What side is this? The south side, the south side of the lake, where at some point in time, someone had placed boulders and created some sort of seating areas down by the lake. We think that general concept could be replicated, maybe a little better done aesthetically and technically, but the concept is very well done. So, we're fundamentally taking that concept and improving upon that and recommending that here in the peninsula. Clearly, people like to go out to the peninsula. There's a worn dirt path that's out there. So, we know that that's a great place, as Anthony mentioned. It's kind of the point. You're surrounded by water. It's great looks across the water. So, we just want to sort of formalize that and give opportunities for people to not sort of damage the environment, sort of clean up some of the water edge plantings. There's some invasives there. There's some things going on. Just tighten that up. The other thing, as Angie mentioned, the boardwalk overlook, we think, we noticed and observed, a lot of kids like to come to that edge there. It's kind of a little dangerous right now. So, we wanted to sort of soften that up by providing a small observation deck that projects into the water just slightly, but as Anthony mentioned, we peeled it back from the last version that you saw based on the feedback that we got. We just give kids a more formal and safe opportunity to sort of get on top of the water and look down and investigate, you know, some of the totals and things that happen in the water. So, it'd be a very small structure.
Yeah. And I just want to expand upon something that Scott sort of mentioned. This has been our approach throughout the project, particularly here in the peninsula area. What we want to do is provide an opportunity for people to interact with the water without disturbing parts of the peninsula and the lakefront that we would like to, you know, preserve the planting and the wildlife along these edges and provide somewhat more controlled experiences where people can approach the water without damaging lakeside plantings or without interfering with the wildlife. So, to provide that experience in a more safe and, you know, stable manner.
Okay. Hey, that was a really good concise overview of some of the recommendations. And it sounds like you've updated a few things based on the feedback that you've heard in the past week or two. So, what I think I'd like to do is ask Prab if you can kind of quickly react to those three areas of suggestion, and then council and the public can kind of speak to each one. Got a few more? Do you want to keep going?
We only have two or three more, I believe, if we just want to.
Okay, please, please keep going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go.
Yeah. Okay. So, one of the things that's gotten a lot of discussion at previous meetings, and we're going to talk about it again tonight, is the materials that we're recommending for various paths and, you know, circulation paths throughout the site. Our recommendation would be that the main path around the lakefront be a resin-bound aggregate, which is not so dissimilar from the gravel or stone dust that's out there right now. The only difference is, rather than a loose material that can shift or move over time, potentially erode into the lake, it is a material which is bound together. So, it's more stable, but it has the appearance and the character of a crushed stone. Now, in some areas, we are recommending a crushed stone, much like what is out there right now, for example, around the picnic grove and out toward the peninsula. Also, there are other areas we're recommending path materials of a more natural character, such as mulch path here between Crescent and the north shore of the lake. This is a path that already exists. It's been kind of blazed by people who just made their own path down from Crescent Road, and we want to make that an official path, but out of mulch. And the meadow path that we discussed earlier would be mown grass and some small existing paths to adjacent neighborhoods, which are currently asphalt. We'd make the recommendation that that becomes a porous asphalt or pervious asphalt product. Another thing to mention as we talk about paths, there are many areas of the lakeside path where, just over time, material being added to this lakeside path, it's grown, you know, according to my measurements in some areas, 16 to 18 feet wide. We're going to recommend that it be made uniform all around to a consistent 10-foot width. In some areas, that would mean a reduction of the existing path and a restoration of the shoreline.
So, just to add to that, there were a couple of comments that talked about us widening paths and putting more paths in. We're not doing that. We're actually narrowing paths. So, in terms of any tree damage or anything like that, we're actually taking measures to give a more healthy environment for trees. But also, with the path material, a lot of the problems that we're having out there are erosion problems. And that's a combination of water being channeled to certain areas, which by some of the reconfiguration of the pathways that we've done, we've minimized that ability to happen. But a lot of the erosion that you're seeing is because the surface is not stable, and a lot of that gravel is ending up in the lake in certain areas. So, this is another provision that we're doing, is to try and minimize those. And then lastly, about the paths, now let Anthony finish, is in terms of maintenance, I'm sure that, you know, the staff can tell you what it's like to maintain gravel paths that are constantly shifting, and materials are constantly moving. You're constantly having the top dress and regrade those due to erosion issues. We're trying to minimize that level of maintenance that's taking place. So, there's just some additional comments.
And one last thing to say about path is that the material that we're proposing around the lakeside path is a porous material. Water can pass through it. Right now, the way that gravel and material has been continually added over the years around the lakefront path, currently, it's not porous. It functions like a paved path essentially. Water runs off of it, and water carries material with it into the lake. Water runs off of it and water carries material with it into the lake. And we've observed that. So along the path, we're recommending some sort of typical conditions that we would like to see the lakeside path sort of have. In some areas, we'd recommend that boulders stabilize the downslope path edge to prevent some of that migration of material that we've been talking about and provide a nice decorative edge with natural character.
It also encourages people to sort of stay on the path.
Right.
It's sort of a psychological barrier that would encourage that type of activity.
We're also recommending underdrain areas in some areas where the topography creates sort of a swale or a funnel that directs water over the path and into the lake. We'd recommend an underdrain system that allows that water to be carried beneath the existing path before it enters the lake. And as was mentioned before, we're recommending some boulder seating areas, and this already exists along the south shore of the lake. And we've noticed that people like to sit on the boulders. People like to take a moment to pause and look out onto the water and reflect, just maybe take a break, catch your breath. And we want to provide an enhanced version of these boulder seating areas at key locations along the lake's edge.
Eric?
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. So I'd like to, with council's blessing, I'd like to actually pivot to Prab a bit to just share some of their initial reactions to the five areas and the additional comments. But one thing I want to just say real quick. So you are definitely not recommending that the paths all be paved throughout the park. I think, just with my math skills, you're recommending maybe, I don't know, 5%, 10% of the trails, maybe less than that?
I think it would be more than that. I don't know the exact percentage. But no, we're not recommending that every single path is paved. Mainly just the pathways that come in from that main entrance and the ones around the lake.
Right, and the surfaces that you've mentioned, the resin-bound gravel kind of, that's pervious?
Yes, water flows through it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I think it is related to that because I think thinking about what it means to pave a trail is interesting. It's not pavement that is, you know, asphalt. I think the path around Lake Aramisio, for example, was mentioned, which is asphalt. So this will actually look pretty similar to what's there now in terms of being basically a gravel-looking surface, but it won't be loose gravel. It will be, so it's paved in the sense that it's resin-bound, but it's not paved in the sense that it looks like a sidewalk or asphalt. So I think it depends on what you call paving, because I think you talked about that loop down by the lake off of the circle. That, I think you were proposing actual, like, more paved, what we'd think of it. But most of the trail, the appearance may actually be somewhat similar to what it looks like now, but actually be more pervious than what it is now because it's so compacted at this point.
Not pervious now at all.
It's not, and see, that's the thing, is I think it's not, it's actually going to be an improvement over what's there now because of the maintenance issues. It'll be narrower in most places and actually allow infiltration plus some of the drains and things. So I think, I think it's careful, like, I think, Mary, what you were asking about being paved, I mean, if you consider that paving, but it's going to look very similar to what it is now, it'll just be better for the environment than what's there now. Because it, yeah, I just think that's an important distinction to make.
Thank you.
Let's pivot to Prab, if you can give us a quick concise overview of your recommendations, but also your reaction to what's been presented, because it has been modified slightly.
Yes, thank you. In general, we've been pretty hand-in-hand throughout this entire conversation, and they've been very receptive to the feedback that Prab has provided, as well as some of the other community members through the different meetings. For us, it was balancing accessibility, environmental impact, and the kind of current park use and the desired use. We know that the park typical use has changed over time, and so trying to have it go back in time isn't really feasible and realistic. It's trying to help kind of manage it moving forward. We know it's become a regional park, whereas before maybe it was envisioned more as a local park. So as that has changed, the plans should change. Very receptive in terms of, again, the stage, going to the multi-use plaza area, or looking at the smaller observation deck in the peninsula. On the whole, Prab is in support of this. My colleague to the right, I wanted to make sure I could call him a subject matter expert, but we've had a lot of conversations about the trail material and what paving versus not paving would be. So would you mind speaking to that piece a little bit for us? Please.
Sure, I have lots of thoughts and feelings now. And Mayor Protam, you did catch the semantic kind of nuance that we're trapped in about what defines paving. As I would use the term, you know, it's pretty broad, whether it's pervious or impervious, loose or bound. So paved is a tricky word for this program. But, oh, I found the edits since the last time we met with Maria Henreichel to be very responsive to the community comments. I think the mayor and Scott both said it right when they emphasized that a master plan is about the big vision. You know, getting the principles right in a master plan is important. How many sixteenths of an inch long a nail is, is for later efforts and definition. I'm certainly in support of the resin-bound aggregate. I mean, if you want to see a nice example, the National Gallery of Art's sculpture garden outside has path systems like that. And you can imagine the dainty heels that walk across those surfaces. So it's, the nice thing about those systems is that when they're designed, they have really strict parameters on gravel size. You're not going to have some of the ankle breakers that are out there now. As far as pervious is concerned, in the long term, I think the best improvement will be the reduction in total paved area, narrowing the paths and reducing the square footage will probably have a bigger impact on perviousness than whatever system we choose. The accessibility that we pushed them on to find an ADA accessible slope at the circle or whatever form that ultimately takes, they did improve that and get the grades down below 5%. So there are accessible paths being proposed in the plan that are not existent on the site now. And, yeah, as far as tree removal is concerned, you know, future designers will design tree protection plans in consultation with the city and the advisory board on trees in Prab to make individual tree decisions. But unless it's in the services of accessibility or reducing hazards, you know, I don't see how this plan requires any major tree removal. So in general, a big improvement.
And if I may, two quick follow-ups. In this, especially in the latter part of the plan, you'll notice that there is conversations about the maintenance plan and there are conversations about personnel. The plan is only as good as it is enforceable and feasible and realistic. And so I would encourage council to consider in future processes as we look at implementing this plan, if it's adopted, to look at the impact that we're going to have on the maintenance management with Public Works and also potential recreation staff increases to be able to maintain that level of service. So, thank you.
Okay, okay. So here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to circle back to each of the three areas and some council questions, and we can stop comments or questions, and we can stop and take public comment on each of the sections. And we'll pause for public comment. And also, we'll pause at that time for some additional feedback from other advisory boards that might be here. So I'd like to actually go back to, with the slide deck, can we go back and take another look at the main entrance area? Okay. So can we zoom? I guess we probably can't zoom into that any closer without seeing the legend. So just in general, you were talking about, Jake Chestnut was also talking about maintaining the balance between accessibility and maintaining the natural character of the park, which I think that's the real challenge, trying to get the right balance between the two. And, you know, looking back at the report, you know, and the feedback from the survey and from the public meetings, there's a word cloud, a lot of emphasis, you know, on accessibility. I think Mr. Varda also framed that question about accessibility. So just getting, because of the slope, you know, from the parking lot to get down to the lake, is that currently, it's more than 5% now, is it not?
Existing conditions right now, yes.
So the proposal for the circle path, since the circumference of the circle, that's not the trail that's there now. It's a wider circle.
Correct.
So as you have scoped it out, more or less, that would be less than 5%?
So again, so good point. So the current path that leads down to the lake now has pretty much run straight down the hill.
Straight line, more or less. That's where the water actually runs down there.
Right, so we're basically bowing that out to get more length, which reduces the slope. Now, on the side of the trail to the right that goes to the picnic area, it's only accessible to the point where it gets to that first trail that goes into the picnic area. So that picnic area is accessible. Once you get beyond that intersection, that path is no longer technically accessible by ADA standards. So accessible, for the context of this conversation, means a pathway that is 5% of grade or less and has a walking surface that is stable. That's the definition of accessible. The other accessible path to get people down to the lake, which is a new pathway, will be on the other side of the circle, and that is fully accessible all the way down to the lake, which is 5% or less.
Right.
Once you actually get to the lake pathway, because that lake pathway that surrounds the entire lake is fundamentally flat, from an accessibility standpoint, that is considered accessible.
Yeah, and I was going to quickly comment about that. So the path, actually, you know, big picture, if you come down to Area B, which is where the dam is, that's flat. So as it is right now, that's a flat area. And there is an access road there from the recycling area down to there, but the gradation is more than 5%. So, you know, the circle path seems like a good way overall of improving the accessibility. And once again, just personal comment, sort of knee-jerk, but also looking at this closely. I like the plaza part down, Part M, I guess, or Part J. I have mixed feelings about the fishing pier, but the multipurpose plaza area is pretty flat, and there's a path there anyhow. So those are just a couple of quick, personal reactions. I don't know, council, other, Mayor Protam?
Well, I had a question, because actually, looking later on in the packet, it actually looks like the right-hand side is the one that's under 5%. Because, what is it, Appendix A? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. It's not... Because it looks to me on that, that the the area from about D to the intersection down there is labeled as plus or minus 6.5% on that diagram at the end on Appendix A. Am I misunderstanding that diagram?
Yeah, I think we just misspoke. The, I'm outlining the accessible route in orange on the screen right now?
Yeah, I did misspeak. I apologize. I had, I was flipped on the wrong side. Thank you for correcting that.
I just, I thought I understood that diagram and wanted to make sure.
What we provided in the back of the, in the back of the appendix was a preliminary high-level grading plan, recognizing that these grades were taken from GIS files, not a formal site survey. But you are correct. Yes, I misspoke there. My apologies.
So the accessible way down to the lake is down the right-hand side there?
I apologize.
And so that, but that still would allow accessible access down to the dam, which is flat as well. Okay.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that each element that we've sort of proposed and labeled here on the plan would be accessible via a pathway 5% or less, and I think we've accomplished that.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that we've accomplished by sort of bowing the path is one of the major erosion issues that's happening right now is actually down by the current amphitheater. And that's being caused because that pathway, which is gravel, which erodes, runs straight down the slope. And so that's basically just a drainage channel. And so what happens is that water that starts up at the parking lot comes all the way down that pathway, brings gravel down from that pathway, flushes it across the gravel path along the lake, and you're starting to see it plume into the lake in that bottom area. So by bowing this pathway out and regrading that, we're going to prevent that water concentration from happening. So there are multiple reasons as to why that path is sort of bowed like that. So I wanted to point that out.
Okay, council, other comments about this main entrance?
I like, I like it, and I actually like the pier part as well because there are a lot of people who go fishing, and they just kind of walk through, you know, down to the water. And there's a lot of erosion and everything going on too. And I'm wondering if that would maybe prevent people just to, you know, kind of trample down and flatten everything out. So that'd probably be helpful. I don't know how long this pier is going to be, so that would be something, you know, we need to talk about. But I don't want it going all the way into the lake. I mean, that's, that would be a little bit far. But, but I do like the idea of the pier, and I do like the circle idea. I think that's, that's great.
Other thoughts from council on this main entrance idea? Okay. So I'll actually, there's a couple of questions online, and I'll open it up for some, just concise, quick, just talking about this one piece, just to keep things moving. Mayor Protam?
Yeah, so do you want me to read the ones online here?
Sure.
Yeah, so these are a couple of comments from Steve Skolnick. "It's noted that the existing water fountain located along the lake path is not shown on the drawing. This is an important amenity for humans and pets. Will the water fountain be retained? Shouldn't it be shown so that it's included as a maintenance item into the future?" And so I think that's just a notation. And similarly, for the restrooms, also from Steve Skolnick, "which are shown but not noted on the drawing. Apparently, the plan does not include improvements to the restroom structure. Clearly, this amenity is important, should remain, and should be documented as requiring maintenance under the plan."
So we have Mr. Skolnick's comments here, and thank you for those. There are definitely comments here that we will address in the final version of the report. In terms of the aerating pumps and fountain, we did not specifically address anything inside of the lake, and anything inside of the lake was out of our purview. So we can certainly discuss whether or not we want to retain the fountains, the ariations elements that are inside of the lake.
I think it's working to a drinking fountain. There's a drinking fountain that's...
Comments, the written comments that was relevant also to the aeration.
We're not proposing removing the drinking fountain or touching the existing restroom, so we will add a label to that that says that they are to remain.
And I think the other thing that, I don't remember if it was in the comments, but that came up with, with the Green Belt Advisory Committee for Environmental Sustainability, was that the parking lot, I know we just redid that, that's outside of the scope, but I think making a reference to the proposed ideas of electric vehicle chargers and things and just referencing that those are not part of this master plan, but part of other city plans, I think might be worth mentioning in there, just because the parking lot is obviously part of the park. You didn't, that wasn't part of your scope necessarily, but I think I talked to Greg a little bit about this, if we can, you know, maybe make a note about that.
Yeah, I think the parking lot was completed before this plan started, so it didn't make a whole lot of sense to want to tear the parking lot up again.
Right, right.
But I think there's infrastructure there for EV charging stations as well.
Right, and I think just noting that in the master plan, that that's really part of the EV, that's part of the EV planning for the city, not necessarily specifically the Buddy Attic master plan, but that infrastructure was added there. So in order, I mean, I think mostly in the theory of having all of the information that's related to this area at least referenced in this document. And then if somebody wants more details about that, they'd have to go look somewhere else. But...
Sure, I think the way that we would do that is we would reference that the parking lot was not part of the master plan's scope. However, there are elements such as the EV charging stations that would be added on as part of a future project and considered part of the overall park. So we, we can work on how we build that language into the, to the final report, absolutely.
So, yeah, so the accessibility piece, making it possible for people that maybe do not have as much mobility... maybe do not have as much mobility as, as others, making it possible for them to get to the picnic area, or down to the, to the, the dam area, which is flat, it's good perspective on the lake, it's, it's very attractive for a long-term, uh, vision of what we'd like to have in the park. Also, you know, being very familiar with, uh, the picnic areas G, uh, you know, some small structures, uh, pavilions. Pavilion sounds so big, but what you've actually drawn is, is not that big.
So...
And, and I think, I think there is a way, you know, there, the trees are not that dense, so you, you know, can intentionally just avoid taking down any trees.
Just historically, that area, um, in that, not that exact area where that red, uh, rectangle is, but that area used to be the group picnic area. We never had a pavilion there, it was just covered with, uh, shade by trees. Over the years, a lot of those trees came down, died or fell down, and, um, so, uh, we stopped renting that area out because there is no shade there at all. Uh, so, and we have the individual, uh, picnic pavilions for families, which you don't need a permit for, it's first come, first get, fifteen and under. This will be, we, we used to rent that area out for seventy-five people or less. So what we're proposing is a fifty-person pavilion in the area G, and then a, uh, twenty-five person pavilion in area H, on the other side, a smaller pavilion on the other side. So it would match the, what we had existing, uh, many years ago. Um, speaking with park rangers, they think seventy-five is the max number that we would want to, uh, have in the park at any one time with everything else that's going on in the park.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Uh, so I'd like to actually pivot, and if anybody else in, in the room has a comment, uh, I, I see Mr. Hartman has his hand up, had his hand up first, and this is Skolnick. Let's just focus on, uh, this first part. Mr. Hartman?
Michael Hartman, Two Court Garden Way. First of all, um, it's really clear from looking at this, uh, plan and the discussion, that accessibility, um, was and is an integral part of this plan and not an afterthought, which is usually what happens. So I really appreciate that. That's really important, uh, to that. Um, and, uh, I think, uh, what the discussion about the circle means, and thank you for clearing that up, but that, that presents a very basic concept of accessibility versus distance, and, uh, having to balance the two. So the pathways to the accessible area should also be short, the shortest possible way. And that, I can see that throughout the whole plan, and certainly for the circle especially. I can, now that it's been cleared up, I can see that, but ge- as a general principle, it's important to consider that balance between accessibility of an area and how people get to that area, how far it is from parking, um, and the, and the, uh, pathway that one has to traverse. Um, if I can just make one general comment about the whole thing, um, you have a lot of different, um, obviously you have sections about various focus areas. I would suggest having such a section on accessibility specifically, um, because that will look at, at areas like surface materials, um, and looking at distance, and looking at all these other factors that you took into consideration. If you have them all in, in one of the areas, maybe in appendix, or maybe as a standalone, then it makes pe- it easier to understand all of the accessibility efforts that went into this. And it, also that could be, um, used, uh, on the website when, when this is finally finished, having a website or having, um, information page or something that focuses on accessibility, because that is what people look for specifically. And if you have a, uh, a title area that's separate on that, um, that incorporates everything you've been doing, that would be very, very helpful, um, for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Skolnick?
Lola Skolnick, Eight A Ridge Road. Um, this resin path that is described as being permeable surface, um, I'm, I don't quite understand how it's going to remain permeable, because it's been, I, my understanding is that when de- debris falls onto the, onto the surface, it then needs to be cleaned off in such a way that it remains permeable. Um, I also have concerns about how it will hold up. Um, the, unfortunately, the Public Works drives big trucks over the current, uh, trail that is, um, in place, and, um, so I'm concerned about whether this resin surface can put up with cars, trucks being driven on it, and, um, and what that would mean for long-term maintenance issues. Uh, so I'd love to have some answers about what that actually means, that the idea of it being permeable, remaining permeable, how it holds up. Um, I'd love to see the trucks not drive on it, but realistically, I know that they will. Um, and so there's just common things that get done in terms of maintenance around the park that I understand. I know that police vehicles need to have access and so on and so forth, but, um, anyway, uh, I'd like more information about the resin surface, and obvi- it's going to be very, very expensive, and so to do the entire trail around the lake might be maybe a long-term goal, but what will we do in the meantime, and what specificity, uh, would you recommend for the city to undertake as we move forward to a time when we may or may not do a resin trail around the lake? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, do you want to comment? Uh, you, you mentioned down at the National Gallery of Art, uh, by the Sculpture Garden, there's, there's a path, or I guess it was Matt. Do you, how, do you, or, do you have some experience or just longitudinal data on, on, uh, how those kinds of surfaces need to be maintained and how long they last?
Sure. Lot of questions there. Uh, that's okay, that's what we're here for. Um, I'll try to answer them as best as I can. Um, any path system that you have is going to require maintenance, no matter what you put down, whether it's asphalt, whether it's gravel, whether it's concrete, whether it's permeable surface, it's the level of maintenance that, that requires. And there's always a cost-benefit analysis as to which pathway you want to implement based on a variety of different factors. So, in terms of the permeable surface, um, and I'll try and get as non-technical as I can to answer some of your questions, it needs maintained. Um, typically, those systems require a vacuum be brought over it once a year to pull out any of the residue that you're talking about to keep it porous. So that's something that will have to be maintained as part of this process. Or, over time, it becomes non-permeable, and then it just becomes sort of like a, an asphalt trail. I mean, asphalt is basically bonded aggregates, just like, uh, this resin-based aggregate, it's, they're, they're aggregates, right? They're, they're small stones, and the asphalt aggregate, uh, bondage makes it solid, same size aggregates generally speaking, and the resin bound makes it pervious. So that's sort of the difference between the two. Uh, in terms of vehicles driving over it, you know, that's an operations thing. So, you know, operations is going to have to decide what kind of vehicles are going to be driven over this pathway as it's installed, and if there are going to be heavy vehicles driven over this, you can still use a, a resin-bound surface, but the profile of that has to change to accommodate the weight of the vehicles. So that's something that will have to be decided early on as to what kind of vehicles. Now, um, I always, you know, we do a lot of park work, and there's always this tussle between how do you control where trucks should and shouldn't go, and generally, with all due respect to the maintenance guys, they like to go wherever the hell they want. So it's, it's always a fight, it's always a fight, is, is how the parks get managed in that regard. So there's no always necessarily straightforward answer in that regard. Um, what else did I? Temporary materials cost, yes. So, yes, it's going to be very expensive. There's a lot of pathways here, and unfortunately, that's just a burden that, you know, Green Belt is going to have to absorb to make these parks more accessible, less erodible, easier to maintain. It's always a cost-benefit, right? It, it's probably going to cost a little more upfront, but the long-term maintenance is going to be significantly less. Um, in terms of how you phase it in, I mean, you know, my favorite answer to that one is it's, it depends. You know, it depends on what kind of money sources are available, how much, um, how you want to phase it in, and what, what is a logical sense, what is a logical, um, way to implement it over a period of time. Um, I doubt seriously that you're going to implement all these paths at once. It's going to have to be phased. I mean, we are talking, you know, potentially a million-plus dollars to implement all these pathways. So it's just going to be, have to be something that gets ferreted out through the CIP process, how much of this is going to be allocated as CIP over a period of three, five years, versus how much of this is grantable, and what grants are available that you can classify this as, uh, a, a, a project. Is this a sustainable project that's going to, um, eliminate erosion from sediment and debris going into the, um, uh, lake? That's something that's way more easily grantable. Is it, is it an ADA accessibility, um, project? Those are very easily grantable. There's lots of money out there for accessible pathways. Um, is it a transportation project where you could get people from one part of Green Belt through the other, through the park? That's another way to, to grant this project. So there's a lot of different ways to do that, and that's going to be part of Greg's job is to, as he begins to implement this over time, is to figure out how Green Belt can best implement this through the funding mechanisms that are available to you.
So I think the suggestion about the resin-based material is, uh, is a suggestion, and, you know, if we were to, to take something like this on, and take the, uh, suggestion, we would probably pilot it in on some small segment and, and see how it worked, and as time goes on, you know, there are advances in technology such that there might be some other alternative that might work better. I'm just speculating, it's a suggestion. Mr. Roberts?
I was just gonna ask, that, as far as the thickness or profile, as you call it, of the resin-based, uh, material, what would be normal for a walking path versus a path that's having some vehicles on it?
Yeah, there's different profiles, and I hope I don't misspeak of pulling this from memory, and Matt might be able to correct me, but I think it's a three-inch resin-bound surfacing with four-inch gravel subbase is what the, or is it a two-inch resin?
Don't, don't quote me. Um, yeah, yeah, that sounds generally right, and I would not, I mean, uh, the, the proprietary system manufacturer would have to bless it, but it's, I think it's possible that the existing gravel could be used as a subbase, which would be a significant savings for installing.
Actually dig out the subbase to...
Oh, you already have a really compacted gravel surface there. I mean, it seems like the purpose surface to top.
So you would just lay on top, I assume? Because if you're dig- because if you're digging down, then you're digging up the, there are tree roots.
That would be an engineering detail that would need to be worked out, because also if you, it depends on how thick the existing profile is, so we'd need to figure out how much gravel is there now. We may want to remove surface material, we may not, because if you're going to add two inches on top of that material, that means you're going to have to fill in the edges with topsoil to, to make up that grade difference. But we are also going to be removing a lot, a lot, a lot of material, because as Anthony mentioned, in some instances, some of these pathways are eighteen feet wide. So there's going to be a lot of material that's going to be removed as part of this process.
Well, I think personally, I think that's probably one of the best things that you're doing is making the paths narrower, because it's kind of ridiculous right now. When you got an eighteen-foot wide path, it's like, it's not necessary. And I don't think that the big trucks are necessary either. I think this park could be maintained with golf carts or even very small pickups. If you look at, I mean, some of the, like, if you go down to the National Arboretum, they got them little tiny pickup trucks that are about, you know, not much bigger than one of these tables. So, we can do that.
Yeah, and I, I want to assure council and the public that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna contact some firms and get some ideas and how the engineering would work, and exactly what needs, how thick it needs to be, and what the subbase might be, and bring all that information back to council for a work session to share, um, with everyone so we can have feedback on that. So nothing is going to happen until, you know, we get all the answers.
Okay. Hey, I want to try and keep, keep this moving, you know, as we're on the session, and, and, yes, Catherine?
Hello, this is Catherine Plaisson.
Yes.
Um, I have one additional concern, uh, which is, I, about the path, again, paving the path, uh, is that it brings safety issues. When you in, bring a, a paved surface, you invite bicycle, electric bikes, scooters, this would be a perfect shortcut to go through, and I want you to think for a minute of the experience of walking around the lake here, um, or lake, and the experience of working at Artemisia. Here, when I go around the lake, this is peaceful. This, I would say this is experiencing nature at its best. When I'm at Artemisia, I love bicycling to Artemisia. There is a lot of bicycles, but when you walk there, it's very, a lot of anxiety. You're walking, you're trying to talk to your neighbors, and up, and up, and you are always being zipped by, by bicycles, and the path is about three times as large as the proposed path. So, maybe, you know, everything is a matter of, you know, balancing conflicting, uh, goals, but I think if we pave around the lake, we are inviting a lot of new safety issue, which was the main concern in your survey. So, and I think we're really gonna have a, a, a dramatic impact on the experience of walking on the lake. So I agree that we absolutely need to address accessibility, and, but I still think we are paving way too much around the lake. We should, uh, uh, pave a lot less. And I want to add another comment, which is, I have some experience pushing a wheelchair as a, a family member, and I'm not going down this path. I'm, I'm in good shape, I know, I look old, but I'm, I could push hard. This is too steep. If we, even if we get the, just barely under the five percent, this is barely providing accessibility. It will help a lot of people walk maybe more easily, but we're not really, I mean, it's not possible to be accessible for everybody, but don't think you're gonna have a wheelchair going down that path around the lake. If I, if I was gonna really design a path that provide accessibility, you would need a lot of, of zigzag to, to allow somebody normally, uh, able to push a wheelchair. So just a reminder that, again, we have a lot of things to balance here, but we're not solving it, uh, necessarily by, uh, paving the trail. Uh, I would say at the contrary. Another aspect of those paved trail, to be, uh, to provide that, uh, permeability, you need to dig up pretty deep, remove a lot of material, put some gravel. So you'd always impact the trees, for example, that are around it. There is always a big impact. And, uh, you know, I was gonna talk a lot about, uh, maintenance, uh, like Lola just did, because again, I think we, it's never talked about. Here, I look at the proposal, I don't think there is a word about maintenance of those trails. So that's kind of the, the elephant in the room, that, uh, I believe even the pass, the permeable pass around the parking lot is already deteriorating. It's brand new. Is it maintained? Is it being washed like you're supposed to? I don't know, but, uh, it's not mentioned, and we, we really, saving, paving the trails is not an answer to all those questions. It brings new problem. So I have other things, but I'll talk to you.
Thank you. And we, we do have a question online from Jay Davis, and it brings up a thought for me as well, but, well, "What safety elements will there be on the pier to prevent falling in? Concern about the attractiveness to small children, for example." So, what about that? So you, you sort of, this, this is a, this is a master plan, it's a framework, it's sort of like a conceptual site plan, where it's, so you haven't really gotten into that detail, but can you speak, uh, to that concern?
Yeah, I mean, we would envision that both the overlook, as well as the pier, has a, a guardrail of some type on it. What kind of guardrail it is, whether it's wood or, or metal, is to be determined, you're right, that level of specificity will, but we envision that that, that will, you know, have a guardrail around it.
Personally, the, the location of the pier, uh, I, I would, this is my personal opinion, I, I'd rather see it, uh, off to the side, one way or the other, closer to J or closer to B, as opposed to being right in the center. That's just my personal take. Uh, I suppose we'll take one more question, because I do want to keep this moving. This is a question specifically on, on this part of the proposal. Mr. Lippert, go ahead.
John Lippert, Thirty A Ridge Road. Um, while it's a good segue to the, um, safety concerns that Catherine and Jay Davis, uh, just raised, um, in addition to the comments that, uh, Green Aces, the green team... In addition to the comments that Green Aces, the green team and individual members gave just the past week and a half when my wife and I were walking, there was a cyclist that nearly clipped my wife. And then like a day or two later, we hear this awful noise down at the park. And there was somebody, teenager or 20-something, with this little motorbike that made an awful noise and went all the way to the peninsula and just sat there with that. So you're, you know, when you get a fishing pier, you get all these real nice benches and that, you're going to get more population. And with more population, you've got to take that into consideration of what are you going to do to keep the people safe that are walking and are cycling? And then my wife, I don't know if she made it on Zoom or not, but she just saw the sign that said, "Walk with the dogs on the left."
Oh, I already reported that. That's not ours. Somebody put that up.
Oh, okay.
I saw it and I'm like...
And the dogs are going to be in the middle of the road.
Right, right.
And then a cyclist comes by, wham!
I saw it and I'm like, wait, I asked his wife. Who put that sign up? This makes no sense at all. But it was a professional sign. I mean, it was literally...
They're taking it upon themselves to put up their own signs.
Yeah.
Maybe not only in Greenbelt. But, you know, in another section of the report, there's emphasis on some new signage and actually working to control the, manage the entry and access points. That was definitely a point in the report. Mayor Potem, and then we'll move on to the next section, which I guess is the Cove.
Well, and I think one of the things that was alluded to, but I don't know that we're going to get to in detail tonight. I think Jake was talking about it, is some of the, some of the potential staffing additions are shifting. And I think honestly, that sort of thing may do a better job of preventing people using the trails the way they're not supposed to than whatever the surface is. Because again, I think making the trail narrower means it's going to be less attractive to bicycles coming by. That's, I would think that there, because I don't know, you have to dodge around people. I think the other thing to think about with maintenance is that it's not as if there's known maintenance now. So it's, you know, I think, I don't know exactly how much time is spent with, you know, replacing gravel that has eroded. But I think that's something to keep in mind as well, that even though this may be this vacuuming or whatever is required, it's not as if it's going from zero to something. It's already something. It's going to something else. So I don't know, I think, I don't have enough experience to have any sense of how much more. But that's something I think we can take into consideration as we're considering this, that it's already taking some work.
Okay. Hey, at this time, let's go ahead and pivot. Let's take a closer look at the Cove area. And I remember we did a walking, a group kind of walked with you guys around the lake. And we stopped here for a while. And this is another area where some people felt strongly that the natural outlay of the area, the sort of steps almost down to the water. It's, so it's a natural resting area there, more or less. But counsel, do you have any comments or thoughts about what's being proposed here? What's being codified in this plan, this framework?
Are you talking about the benches?
Yeah, yeah, that's wrong.
I like the stone benches.
And so people, I think you walk down there every day.
I walk all the time.
Every day.
I walk around twice, almost every day, if it's good. But not in the last couple of weeks because I was sick. But I like the stone bench. And yes, it could be improved, but I think it flows really nice with the surroundings and I really would like to keep it. So I think that's great. As for the bikes, I think on the signage, when you enter the parks, it says no bikes allowed. But I may be wrong. But I think we had that issue before, but we need to look. But, no, is it not? I thought, okay, I, all right. I thought, I saw it, but maybe not. But that might be a thought. Maybe though, if we have small paths or narrow paths, maybe we have to restrict, you know, people on bicycle possibly, or scooters or whatever. So, but we'll, we can talk about that. But no, I like the stone bench. I think that's great. And with improvement, hey, that makes it even better. I think it's great. And a lot of people like to sit there and watch the turtles and so...
Any thoughts about the G areas, sort of restoring the wetland planning and restoration areas? Any concerns about that?
I don't have any concerns, but I'm very glad to hear that it's being handled. It is kind of just a messy area right now. And I think that some thought, with some thought, it could be really, really beautiful.
Okay, any, yeah, Mr. Roberts, any feedback from the public? Mr. Hartman?
And I apologize to public works staff if, was I, oh, no, okay. I thought I was saying you were thoughtless about that part of the park.
Michael Hartman, DuCorcorde. The seating area brings up another issue of integrating seating capability for people with and without disability. So that someone with, someone with a disability has a place to sit in the same area. And trying to make those, I realize it's really difficult for this because it's a step. But generally, when you're designing seating areas, it's important to have an integrated area so that people with and without disabilities can sit in the same place if they're coming together. And so obviously you can't put, you know, share this, but that's not a good idea. Anyway, but just generally, that is something to be looking at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Let's see, is there an interpretive sign in this area? It seems like a good place because people do tend to pause and sit and kind of take a look at the turtles and different things and birds that are coming down. So this is, would be a good place for bird feeders or some sort of interpretive information about what people are likely to see. But of course, that's pretty detailed, so that's not what we're really talking about here. I think this area, just in general, this area is not going to be very accessible just because of the gradation from street level to this. And it's pretty, pretty far away. So I know a couple of, a few of the residents in that area, you know, have direct access close to this area. But just generally speaking, this is not going to be a highly accessible area for people that are challenged in their mobility. Unless, what do you think about that statement?
It's a good distance away from the main parking lot. It is accessible from Lake Crest Drive. If people park there, they can walk over to that section of the lake, but...
It's steep though.
There's that one hill as you go up toward Charlestown.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's probably above the 5% grade, but I think we could probably work that into the plan to make it accessible at some point.
It's a path that comes off of, I think it's maybe Pinecrest?
Right.
That is probably not accessible, but yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
On the, I don't really see the existing stormwater pond there. Is that, is that incorporated into the G or whatever that other lower one is? Or where would that be?
I mean, this is section G?
I don't know why you need that big area of grass there. I think that's the downfall of this for me. There's really no reason to have a big lawn there.
Currently kind of what it is.
Why couldn't that become, you know, more of a wetland or a part of the existing stormwater pond? Because we know the existing stormwater inlet, the pond or whatever you want to call it, is really too small for what it's trying to do. So I don't really, I don't see the, I think that A area should be a part of that. I think it should be a part of the natural area, not a grass. We don't need a bunch of grass.
I think it's grass now.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, well, that doesn't mean that we need it in the future, though. You know, I think we can have a lot more beautiful space without as much grass.
Grass there.
I walk down there all the time with my dog. It's all grass. And it gets very muddy because we have that standing water on that little, in that little cove. But it's all grass down there, so I don't know what...
Maybe it'd be better if it didn't have all grass. That's all I'm saying.
Of course, that's the area where we were planting trees over there. What was that, the Public Land Day last year?
Exactly, yeah.
And we planted a whole bunch of, how many trees? Kevin Carpenter Driscoll, how many trees was that? That must have been about 50 trees. It was a lot.
It was more than 50.
It was more than 50?
It was over 100 because of all these little seedlings. Yes.
At one time, you know, I had some friends that grew up in Ten Court of Southway. I grew up on Research Road. So when I was a real little kid, I didn't get down to this much area much. But they used to tell me how beautiful the stream was that came down through where the apartments are now and through this area. So it was apparently a very nice wooded area with a beautiful stream going through it.
And... Over where the path is?
No, where the, like, where the stream comes into the existing stormwater pond.
Behind the apartments.
Yeah, there's the stream. Part of the stream still comes down through, yeah.
Some work there, the clean water partnership.
That's why I'm saying if you continued that through, it could be more like it was originally and part of the stream slash stormwater management area. That's all.
So, yeah, so we planted all these trees there. And I'm just wondering, Mr. Vara or Mr. Carpenter Driscoll, do we actually have like a zero tree loss policy? Like whenever we do something in the parks, it seems like we should strive to actually plant, replant enough trees or foliage to actually compensate for whatever comes down. It seems like a policy thing that we could actually put into place. Maybe it'd be a little bit hard to achieve that. You might have to plant four or five trees for one tree that comes down. Isn't that doable?
I think that would be a good project for the Advisory Committee on Trees, potentially.
Okay. Anybody else online?
No other comments or raised hands?
Okay. Hey, let's go ahead and pivot to the peninsula. Okay. So I just mentioned that clean water partnership. When they dredge the Forbay, which is over in Area C, part of that partnership, it's a public-private partnership that's been in place with Prince George's County. And it helps us to meet the EPA's stormwater management goals. I'm blanking on the specific name. But part of that agreement is that that Forbay will be maintained for 30 years. So it's been now about seven or eight years since they did that, right? At least, so we might want to make sure that it continues to operate well. And maybe, maybe it's time to have them come back again. And, you know, that there are a couple of interpretive signs there. So what I've noticed is, you know, typically on a Saturday morning, or I guess any morning, sometimes there are people kind of standing there. Also, it's a good place to meet up. So the idea of expanding or adding some additional area there seems like it might be a good idea. You know, people do tend to come through there either running, sometimes on bikes. So if you had some additional space for people to look at the interpretive signs and to just kind of enjoy the area there, might be a good idea. This is, peninsula is a special place. So all along A and B, the idea of seating but using boulders or rock formations is kind of a nice idea. I think that's something that came up with Prab's comments, was it not, Mr. Jacob? The idea of trying, if you're going to do seating, it should, maybe boulders or stones could actually accomplish that. So I think that's a cool idea. C got the existing bridge. You've got some seating, but not benches, but more so natural, natural seating. And the proposed planting area is also up along the peninsula. So how, how do you think that planting area, you know, this part of the park has been challenged over time by the beavers? So, and Kevin Carpenter Driscoll can certainly speak to the fact that we've put a lot of volunteer hours into trying to protect the new trees. And I believe there's, there's at least one beaver dam right now. Anybody know, how many beaver dams are there back by the peninsula? Two or three lodges? And over time, you know, the, the family grows and the young ones get, the young males get kicked out and they got to come up with a new lodge.
It must be the one that you saw walking in the center.
You saw one in the center? Really?
Yes, it was a rainy night several months ago. Beaver and I had an encounter outside of a rather loud New Deal Cafe concert.
Okay.
I think, I think he liked the music.
Checking out the music scene. Did it slap its tail now? No.
How is its rhythm?
The record, he hissed at me and that was all.
Okay.
Okay, any comments? Mayor Potem?
Well, so I just, question about this pathway surface because I was trying to interpret the key that's later in the packet. Is this, I don't, because I think where you have labeled as six-foot stone dust is over in sort of the picnic area, in the original area. This looks similar but is a slightly different color. What is the proposed path surface in this?
I think that's also the six-foot stone dust. It just came out.
The color just looks a little bit different. Okay.
We can fix that in the report.
Okay.
Councilmember McKinney?
Is there any conversation maybe with Prab or during this study around seating areas on the stormwater management side? Or particularly a covering? Because I, one of the events that Kevin had was looking at all the wildlife and the reptiles, right? I think it was the reptile event, which was very cool over there. And I know that a lot of kids and families go and actually watch that. Was that something that was considered on the backside?
Not sure, stormwater management side, I'm sorry.
The, so not the, not on the peninsula, but around C and D? So is that, is that, what type of seating area is that supposed to be?
There, there was no discussion of that. And if I recall, that area is sort of got some interesting grade issues going on where it comes down and touches the water. So, and it's pretty naturalistic and wet. There's some wetland areas in there. So I don't, I don't think we'd recommend, that's why we have the boardwalk or the...
Overlook deck.
Thank you. Lost the word, overlook decking to provide some space that way.
I just wondered if, like, even in the overlook section, if you could, like, attach benches on the actual overlook? So if you have, I don't know if that's possible.
We could, yeah.
So that kids can actually see down and see in...
I think that would, that would come with the design phase. And when we got to that section of the project, exactly what would that overlook look like? And, and of course, it would have to be safe for the kids, yeah. I think there's a fence that goes along that, that stormwater management area now. If it's a wooden, wooden fence, Kevin, is that correct? Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's a pretty steep slope that goes down to the pond.
Climb right up on that fence, too.
Right.
To see over, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you have a lot of turtles and frogs and...
Kids like to see it.
Yeah, of course.
You want, you want seating so that they can see it, but you want it to be safe.
Right.
So how do you facilitate that kind of activity for that to happen? Yeah.
Good point.
Mr. Sickle?
For the pier, for this, for all these sorts of constructions, building code will provide fall protection guidelines for us that we can't fail or we won't, we won't get a stamp of approval from the permits folks.
Hey, I would like to add, so this section at the foot, at the Forbay, you know, C and D, I would say that that is a place of the heaviest cut through because some people are coming up from, from the tennis court area and the parking lot over by St. Hughes. People park over there and then they walk up to get to the peninsula. But also cyclists and runners tend to, you know, maybe start off over in that same area and cut through to Crescent Road on the other side. So, you know, as far as different types of traffic interacting, I would say that this is a hotspot. So we'll take a few questions. Yes, Catherine?
Catherine Plaisant again. It's a, it is not specifically for this area, but I couldn't see where exactly it would fit. But I have some concern about trying really hard to make the park more formal. The word formal appears an incredible number of times in the document. And when I think of Greenbelt, I don't think formal. This is not our thing. We, we think more on nature. And another, another part of it is that this is an historical lake. It was, I mean, I don't need to tell you the story, but it was crazy to be in nature. So I, I think, I, I like things that look good, too. There is the aesthetic aspect. But I don't think, for example, with a single... But I don't think, for example, which a single tree should be cut to make the pass formal. And to make it round, you are gonna hurt some tree. There is no way. I feel like I'm talking for Rodney here. But there is no way to avoid it. It's helpful to avoid to do the pass around things, but then it's not going to be a circle. You know, I'm just, this is a general comment. So it's a warning that by making things more formal, you may also likely to hurt some of the natural aspect of the lakes that I believe are historical lake. This lake was dug by hand in a what was once a braided stream. I should do like this. So there is still a lot of historical vegetation around the lake. Okay, we have invasive, but we should invest in more maintenance to remove the invasive. But if, if to make an area more formal, we remove some of the historical clasera or other really important plants, historical element of this lake, or cut some trees, or even have to hurt the tree by cutting the roots, by having to dig a permeable pass that has to be about this big to allow permeable function to function properly. We're gonna be really upset. So we, I would want to encourage you to be very careful about features that make it more formal, but also hurt or or environment or historical natural environment. We could make the dam more formal. That's fine. It's already a dam. It's already a feature that we destroyed to make a dam. But let's preserve, for example, the edge of the lake, especially the south part of the lake. Some of it, the north part, there is really a lot of excellent vegetation here that should not be touched. That's my position. So think about the cost of being formal. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem.
Well, and I think this came up several times in some of the other public meetings. I think at least for me, formalizing a space isn't so much about making it more manicured. It's more like it's informal as opposed to ad hoc or haphazard to a certain extent. So I think, I think it's a different, a different word in opposition. That it's, that it's formalized in the sense that you are setting boulders there so that people can get down to the lakefront without scrambling and eroding the lakefront. It's not that it looks manicured and tidy. It's formalized versus people just doing whatever they want. So I think, I think that distinction is kind of important. That there are some areas that are formal in the sense of like an English garden, but there's also areas that are formalized in terms of setting it up so it's easy for people to use and it may still look like it's natural. It's just we put the boulders there. I mean, am I, am I misinterpreting the, the, the?
I would say a synonym for formal in this document would be to do so with intention.
Yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah, that's a better.
Rather than just letting something happen.
Yeah, so it's intentional versus unintentional rather than formal in the sense of a formal garden that's all manicured.
Like we want people to sit in these areas and leave those areas alone, kind of thing.
Yeah.
But I think still think like to create something formal, you have to destroy some of those things around it. Just, it's more like you don't want to turn things into Disneyland, you know, it's gonna be nature framed to be more clean and intentional. But I think there, you will not stop people from doing whatever they want anyway.
But if you make it easier for them to get to the lake at a place that already has rocks, then they'll go, they'll have the least resistance there, right?
This area, you're gonna bring heavy equipment, you're gonna destroy some of the local features anyway. So just there is a cost to it. That we should not ignore.
Well, let's see. So historically, you know, back in 1937, I guess they started digging the the lake out, I don't know, 1936 by hand with hand tools and whatnot. And I suppose, I guess that the access point, they probably started from Crescent and coming off of Old Edmundston Road. So I don't know what the impacts would have been when they built the dam, but I imagine just like with the rest of Greenbelt, they actually clear cut all the trees and took everything out. So, you know, the the perception or the image that we have of what the norms were and what the intentionality was in 1937 compared to now, I think we have a much more natural kind of perspective about how, how a lake should look and how we want it to look than may have been the case in 1937. That's just a personal opinion. Hey, so I don't see any other comments. I did want to, oh, Mr. Roberts, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on what was just said about the, you know, formalization and everything because I think fishermen are a perfect example. When people go fishing at the lake, they want to go where they want to go. They're not gonna follow a path or sit on the boulder or sit on the little pier up, you know, by the front. They're gonna go where they think the fish are. And that means they gotta get down next to the water, you know, where no one else is or no one else has been or whatever it is. That's the way it's gonna be, you know, so you can't totally control, as much as you want to control people and keep them in, you know, a straight and narrow line. You're not, we're not gonna be able to, you know, especially for certain users of the park. I mean, yeah, some people come there and they don't go anywhere but on the path. You know, and then other people, they want to go where there is no path. So that's, I think that's why having a more natural area is preferable. And I think she is right that that's what the creators really intended. I mean, they, this, the lake wasn't actually a part of the plan. And the only reason they built it was because they didn't have any drawings to start building houses. So they said, somebody said, hey, there's a great place. Let's build a, let's build a lake down here. That's why they built the lake. It wasn't a planned part of the city. You know, so, but we gotta do the best we can to keep it a nice, a more natural place, I think.
See, Mr. Roberts.
Stephen Broad to Sea Westway. My concern is also with the material of the trail around the lake. I'm one of the many people who walk or jog pretty much every day around there. And I think changing the materials are really a major change. I want to echo the mayor's suggestion to have a pilot project. So those of us who use the Semenity can find out what it's actually like to walk on that. I wonder if our experts could say something about the experience of walking on it. Is it more like walking on what's there now? Or is it more like walking on asphalt? And the, another question I would have is what's it like when it rains or when there's snow or ice? How does that material differ from what's there now?
I would say that in terms of the experience of walking on it, obviously there's a a sound and a tactile feeling to walking on a loose material. It moves with you as you walk. And because the resin bound aggregate is a stable material, it doesn't respond to your feet moving in the same way that a gravel would. But on the other hand, it's not smooth and monolithic in the same way that concrete or asphalt is. It has the texture of a natural stone or a loose aggregate material, but it's stabilized.
Right now, when it rains or snows or there's ice, it's not always pleasant, but it's usually navigable because you can find some gravel to step on. I'm concerned that if it's a solid surface, that's no longer going to be true.
I, well, I can't, I was gonna say that I don't have experience with snow or ice on the material that Scott does.
So it's, in terms of snow or ice, I mean, it's gonna be like any other hard packed surface. It's gonna respond the same. Terms of rain, it's permeable. So it's going to surf through, whereas right now the gravel path probably has wet soggy areas that you're gonna experience and it's gonna have puddles that you're gonna experience. That will all be eliminated with this new surface material. So it'll be a lot more stable, a lot more durable, not more reliable, and it won't have these areas where it holds water, it gets moist or gets, you know, damp because it'll be a stable, relatively solid material. And in terms of walking on it, it'll feel like you're walking on gravel because you are walking on gravel. It's just resin bound. It's just not gonna have the crunch that you're used to hearing. But in that regard, it'll be more stable because as Anthony mentioned, it's not gonna move. So if you're not paying attention to your footing or you hit an erosion reel or you hit a depression, you're not gonna experience that with this because it's gonna be more stable, more stable footing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's sort of speaking to referencing what, what Ms. Skolnick said. With pervious surfaces like the parking lot over at the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. I've noticed that when it snows or when it's icy, the water actually soaks through. So the, the snow doesn't really stick. But it's contingent upon the surface being maintained over time. And I'm sure if, if we have a heavy snow this winter, I'm not predicting that we're gonna have a heavy snow, although it's possible. You know, we'll actually see about the parking lot, the Buddy Attic parking lot, now that that is paved and is a pervious surface and it hasn't snowed since that happened. Yeah, Mr. Roberts.
How, how, what I wonder about the, the surface you're talking about is, I know you keep saying it's stable, you know, it's solid and all that. Because it's resin bound, but the fact is, no matter how much you compact underneath of it, the ground is still moving. I mean, the ground never stops moving. It comes up, goes down. So I really wonder, you know, how much cracking you're gonna get and stuff like that. A few years ago, I had, I did a job where I repaired a similar kind of thing, was very small gravel. It was bound with some type of resin. And everywhere, it was over concrete though. So, but everywhere there was a joint in the concrete, it was all cracked and falling apart. So I had to patch all that in. I actually, I didn't know what kind of resin they had or what. I used fiberglass to hatch it in. I got a little gravel I can put in a, in an aquarium and patched in what was missing and you know, use fiberglass resin to hold it together. But that, that's my concern about it. I don't, I don't really know that it's gonna stay stable, you know, because of the heaving of the ground. Whereas the surface we got now, it's just going with the ground, you know, it's just. So I, I think experiment is definitely required in, in that, with that stuff, yeah. I think experimenting is, is the best way to pick out.
Yeah, I think another thing I can do is find some places in the area that actually use this resin aggregate and post them to the project page and people can go visit it and walk on it and experience themselves. Well, we can do that easily. So we can probably get that to the project page in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, Mayor Portem, then pivot again. Mayor Portem.
Yeah, I mean, Jay has her hand up. I think Susan Barnett has some ideas about there. There's some place that she told me about that has, I think, this sort of that, that surface. And I've forgotten now where she told me it was. But check with Susan Barnett. Yeah.
There might be a place, a couple of places up in Howard County around Columbia, very new parks and, yeah, go, go ahead.
Well, and I, and I think, I think actually just, I don't think the Buddy Attic parking lot is actually pervious. I mean, there's new stormwater management there, but the actual pavement is not pervious, unlike Spring Hill Lake. Yeah. So the walkways are, but not the parking lot itself. So I think that, because I remember asking about that because I think it was a lot more expensive to actually do something pervious for the parking lot where the cars are itself.
Those, those porous materials which are in sidewalks of the entrance areas to the park, not the parking lot, is a different material than what we're proposing here. Those aggregates are much larger than what we would experience with this material. So it's not a basis of comparison note. So don't think just because it's porous, there's porous asphalt, there's porous pavement. There's different kinds of porous materials. The one we're proposing is not something that's out there currently.
Okay, there's a Jay Davis. You want to read that?
Oh, no, she, she has her hand raised.
Let's promote her so that she can speak.
She should be able to speak.
Jay Davis, are you there?
Yes, I am. So Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. First of all, this is a little historical aside. One of the original plans for the lake, which was never, never taken care of, it was never done, was to put in a resort hotel and a beach, beach for swimming. So we at least didn't have the hotel there. We've kept it natural, but that was one of the original plans. One thing I wanted to ask about, and I'm glad I don't see it anywhere in the report, I hope. Nothing was mentioned about lighting. And I'm hoping that what you have decided is that lighting will not be installed around the pass or around the lake. Because that would certainly disturb the wildlife patterns that we want to keep, the birds and so forth. So I'm hoping that that is what you have decided, no lighting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to pivot once again. So, you know, Prab has, has, you know, worked so focused on this plan so very much. But we did get comments from a number of other advisory boards. And Mr. Lippert, I know from Green ACES, you submitted some suggestions. And I don't know if anyone else in the room is representative of one of the other advisory boards. But I know they submitted some comments and I don't know if Mr. Varda, if you can kind of maybe summarize some of the comments. But we'll take those into account also. John, is there anything else you want to say in, in Mr. Lippert in regard to Green ACES's comments on the plan?
Just what we presented there. We discussed it at one of our meetings and there's a half a page on some of the very general comments. And then some individual members of both our green team and Green ACES gave a very thorough analysis, page by page. And they're included as well.
Thank you, thank you.
I think one thing we haven't talked about specifically was the pairing of trash cans and recycling and making sure that anywhere there's that. I think that, that was also sort of a thread through some of the other comments too, is that picnic pavilions will need trash resources and things like that. And that's something to pay attention to.
I think that's.
Also, because I know when I go at the entrance now and I see a blue and a gray, I get confused because there's nothing that says landfill or recycling. And blue and gray, geez.
Yeah, exactly. I, I find myself looking when I have something in hand to throw away, I'm constantly looking back before between green and blue and opening up and taking a closer look.
Well, it's green and blue at Roosevelt Center. It's blue and gray at Buddy Attic Park, parking lot there, so. Well, not just that, but the, the ones at Roosevelt Center got painted over and the signs got painted over as well. So Luisa made sure that it now says landfill and recycling. But the ones at the entrance to Buddy Attic Park, they don't say anything and they're different colors. So it's very confusing.
Yeah, I think that's a citywide managerial, you know, directive that we probably need to iron out. Yeah.
We can take care of that.
Yes.
Let's see, Catherine, you submitted some separate comments from Green ACES, so you're, yeah. Yes, go ahead.
So just to say that first, thank you for taking care of our great lake. It's very important. Thank you for the proposal. There is a lot of wonderful things. One of them, for example, is including meadows. But I have a question about the location of the meadows because it's my understanding that because of the firework, we need to mow everything in this area just before the Fourth of July would seem to be the wrong time for meadow to be mowed. So I'm wondering what your, how you think this should be done for meadow.
Certainly, the Fourth of July is a big event in Greenbelt and it's, you know, until, you know, as long as the fireworks are having a, a, a function there, it's probably something we're gonna have to talk about. On how to, how to manage those meadows and we may not be able to, to do that while we have that event. It's something we're gonna have to work out from staff level.
Right.
Yeah.
So you might also consider like, I forgot what the name you gave it officially, but the south part section of the meadow, where actually Rodney was saying, why do we need grass? This might be an alternative place for a meadow that you would not have to mow.
Yeah.
So anyways, that's one more concern to, to have to worry about. Thank you.
Anybody else from any of the other advisory groups? I know the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, they reviewed the draft plan. And they forwarded three bullets. Number one, the proposed new circular loop trail by the parking area will be accessible to those using walkers and wheelchairs. And number two, the dock pier area near the lakefront promenade. And number two, the dock pier area near the lakefront promenade would be accessible, and the overlook deck by the pond near Brayden Field. So accessibility seemed to have been the the main focus, but also the plan reflects a very thorough survey of interest and needs of our residents. And they forwarded an idea. They they thought that there should be more areas with bird feeders that attract a variety of birds. So I guess that would work for the birds. It wouldn't necessarily be a deterrent for the beavers. Like, we do the squirrels too. Those squirrels know how to get up to those feeders. And the advisory committee on trees, Greg, you, what did what did they say? I mean, they said a lot of things, and I guess I didn't want to.
Mr. Lippert, did you send that?
Not the advisory committee for trees.
Some council member, you want to summarize?
Well, I think I think there was a concern about the trees being removed, but I think that was may have been a misinterpretation of 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 what would happen. And I think that they suggest tree removal should be minimized. I think that's that maybe needs to be more explicitly stated as part of the plan. That might be a way to address that concern. And then I think some of the other questions we already actually talked about a little bit earlier in terms of the specifics of list of trees that would be replaced and shrubs to be removed needs provided. I think some of those details are not really within the scope of this master plan, but would be as we got into individual areas. And I think the other, what did they talk about, the food forest near the playground? And I think that's not specifically noted, so maybe that's something to label on the 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 map at the beginning. They also had some concerns about the paving, but I think a lot of their concerns about the plant communities and and things may just be more project specific rather than master plan, because I think it gets into the level of detail that wouldn't necessarily, like, the actual list of plants wouldn't necessarily be part of this plan. And then they also had the question about the Fourth of July and the meadow and fire safety. But I think we've, I think we've talked about glancing through this. I think we talked about a lot of the things that the advisory committee entries brought up.
Right, right.
And and the project team, Scott and Anthony, we reviewed this packet as well before the meeting tonight. And they have a copy of it, and all this information we posted on the project page, so everyone can see it.
What's the the URL of the project page?
It's in the memo. So, yeah. But we can, well, I don't know. I can't really post it on the project page. But if you go to the city website and search Buddy Attic Park Master Plan, it'll take you there, I hope.
Okay. Well, we've covered a lot of ground. Good discussion, you know, a lot of a lot of thoughts, important thoughts about maintaining the the natural character of of the park, taking into consideration the the needs of people who who walk on a regular basis around the park on the one hand, but also taking into consideration the ability, you know, longer term. It's it's a vision, this is a plan, it's a vision, it's a framework. So long term, you know, we we do want to do everything we possibly can to make sure that all residents are able to to take advantage, to to enjoy your parks to some extent. So we can't do everything. We are certainly constrained by the budget. But by having an aspirational plan that it can be built upon in time, it it puts us in a better position to to really look at what those costs and benefits will be long term. So I really want to thank our consultants for all the work they've done.
Yeah, but we have two, we have two more comments online, Carol Malvo, who's a a member of Prab, and then Jay has her hand up again.
Okay. Carol Malvo, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, I just I just wanted to say to everybody, especially my members, our members of Prab, this has been a long, long project. Just sitting here and viewing everything and listening to everyone is exhilarating, because this has been in the works for a long, long time, and to see it come to this point as far as fruition, I just want to say I'm proud to be part of this, part of the city, and we have a heck of a committee, Prab. Thank you.
So true, so true. And Jay Davis, are you there?
Yes, I am. Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. The mention of bird feeders, and I understand that people love their bird feeders, but I hope you don't put them at the at the lake. One, they attract rats and other vermin. You'd have to constantly maintain them and clean them, and someone would have to come and put the feed in. I'm sure you'll get volunteers. But generally speaking, bird feeders are not good for the birds. The birds need to find their own kind of food at shrubs and bushes and seeds, and that's where we should probably put our effort, is to plant bushes, shrubs, seed-producing plants that would feed the birds and any and along with the pollinators. Bird feeders are not a good idea at all. Thank you. And it's, that would make it very formal. That would be part of a formal English garden, which we don't need.
Well, thank you, thank you. Those were the comments from the Senior Citizen Advisory Board. And of course, bird feeders, you know, maybe not, maybe we could use a few more bat houses, though. I mean, there are a lot of bats in Buddy Attic Park, and, you know, they're certainly part of the natural environment. But putting that aside, Lola Skolnick, did you have a comment or thought you wanted to share?
Yeah, it sounds like we're not going to get to the part of this document that talks about maintenance and their suggestions for staffing. Is that correct?
Well, well, no, no, we're here now, and we can certainly go there.
So I'm a big fan of the things that have been proposed. I really like the idea of having dedicated staff to the park itself, whether they call it a park supervisor or whatever. I I obviously, there's a cost to all of this, but I do also, I don't remember if in this version, I certainly, it came up before many times. The previous documents referred to the Parks and Recreation Department, of which we do not have. We have a recreation department, and then we have Public Works. And there are people in Public Works who do both, excuse me, park chores, and they also do other chores that have to do with other pieces of the public works. And I, Prab has talked about this for decades, that it would be very beneficial to the parklands in particular to have a Parks and Recreation Department, and to see some of the staff moved into the recreation side to have that direct supervision of the, not only the parks, but the ballfields.
Hey, I I appreciate that, and I suppose, you know, that's a, based on your experience with Prab, this has been something that's been talked about for a long, long time. And I appreciate it being incorporated into the plan, the proposal. There are budgetary implications, and there's major operational implications. So council sets broad policies, sets frameworks like these, but it's the city manager's responsibility to operationalize these things. So discussions about realigning the Parks and Recreation Department and Public Works are are questions that the city manager has to grapple with. So it's it's a it's a long-term kind of a discussion, but one that needs to be broached. City manager, Summeron, you have any comments about it?
Yes, I would add that that we have quite quite a robust process of dealing with our our land, our our lands and maintenance of our grounds. We have three separate teams in our in our Public Works Division that handle fields, parks, and horticulture, and they have, they're three distinct teams. We were looking to do some alignment earlier as part of the budget process, and one of the positions that we consolidated was in the in the Parks Division. So we we do have clear delineation of three teams, and they have different functions. And there has been discussion about how how it fits into recreation functions. And we've talked about alignment in in recreations. When speaking with Greg, the activities that the department does is more than recreation. So we talked about, I don't know, Greg, if this is the appropriate time to talk about aligning the name with all the things that that recreation does, but those are internal conversations that that we've had and have looked for opportunities of how how we can create efficiencies in those three, three different groups. The challenge I saw is that they already do a lot as it is. There there's a lot of expectation on on them to maintain the grounds and have expertise in the different areas. We we expect them to have certification on playgrounds, what working and repairing and maintaining safe playgrounds for kids, while we also have arborists on our team and and other horticulture work. So we continue to have those conversations, but it's not easy. That's it's costly.
Appreciate that. Mr. Varda, did you want to to add to that anyway?
I think the city manager said it well.
Hey, so I just want to kind of, Mayhan, Raquel, you know, your work on this project has been very, very helpful, and just the the level of public engagement that you've coordinated in working with Prab and the city has been maybe a little bit unusual. Perhaps other projects, similar projects that you've worked on, you may not have had this amount of detailed input and whatnot, engagement from the public, but I think you've done an excellent job providing us with a document, a framework that we can move forward with, you know, some, based on the conversation tonight. I imagine Prab and the city manager and Mr. Varda will probably make some additional recommendations. And I would expect this not to come back immediately. Maybe it'll come back. When would you think we would?
I think the next, I think the next steps are Scott and Anthony will take the information they got tonight and the information we got in this packet, go back, tighten up the draft, send the the final version back to us. Certainly, Prab will take a look at it, possibly Advisory Planning Board or any board committee that council would want to look at it and provide feedback to council. And if it's council's discretion to have another work session, you know, with advisory boards and and their comments, we can certainly do that before adoption.
Mayor Protem?
Well, and I guess one question was, is this something, though, that we need to move on to approve in order to, because it's tied into some of our ARPA, some of the allocations we made for ARPA are some items that are in this master plan?
There there's one project in this master plan, and which which are the the picnic pavilions. Now, that 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 project's being funded with ARPA money, and as you know, we need to have that under contract before the end of the year.
Right.
So timing, timing could be an issue with that. So that's something council may have to weigh in on and approve without having this master plan approved beforehand.
Doable, I mean, that's something.
I don't think there's a big kick, pushback on those pavilions. I think a lot of people want it. We get phone calls all the time to rent space at the lake for parties, and we simply have to turn them away.
And it sounds like I think the biggest concern was if trees would need to be removed, but it sounds like that should not be necessary.
That's correct.
And I really do think that we can put some, we should formalize, or maybe that's not a good word, but.
Be intentional.
Anytime, you know, trees are going to be impacted, vegetation, you know, we should make that a zero-sum endeavor. And maybe that's something we can codify. Hey, Mr. Summeron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with regards to the outdoor pavilions, council has authorized the administration to move forward with those two items. Further, council authorized the park amenities that we included an allocation for, so we have that funding.
I guess the question is, do we need to have the the master plan approved to sort of, or but maybe since we already approved those separately, then we don't need to rush as much on the on on final approval of the master plan. Although, to be honest, we spent a lot of time, we've had a lot of public feedback, we already had a lot of advisory boards weigh in. So I'm not sure that I personally feel like another work session should be necessary. I think we should be able to just bring it up. I mean, there's a few tweaks and things that we talked about tonight, but for for me, I feel like this has already been enough of a process, and we've gotten a lot of feedback and incorporated that feedback, that we should just be able to put it before council and approve it as a next step, pending some of these minor, fairly minor revisions.
Yeah, yeah, I think what what can happen is, you know, the next steps, you can kind of formalize, no, you can just take the next steps and, you know, work on the final document. You can submit it to to council to to take a look at, and then we can schedule it as as time permits at our earliest, not at our earliest convenience, but just, you know, based on submitting the document and having it be public. You know, if there's not a huge influx of of new suggestions and ideas, we can put it on the the agenda and approve it.
It it sounds like we're we're close with the.
Very close, very close, yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of work has gone into this, a lot of time and effort and thought. And once again, like to thank the consulting team for their work to this point. Looking forward to seeing the finished product and to Prab, you know, thank you for your laser focus on, both on this, but through the years on Buddy Attic Park. It's certainly the, one of the crown jewels of the city of Greenbelt.
A note on the pavilion, council will have the opportunity to discuss the matter when we, the administration brings the contracts for those pavilions to, for approval by council.
Very good. Hey, well, at this time, let's go ahead. We've got some information, information items to pivot towards. So thank you very much. You're welcome to stay as we talk about information items for the city of Greenbelt.
We'd be grateful to be excused.
Thank you so much.
And thank you. It's been an honor. We appreciate being selected, and we think you have a solid plan moving forward for the next fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. So we appreciate the opportunity and thank you for all the input. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Summeron, you've got one, Mayor Protem, you've got one. I I've got one too.
Yes, the council has expressed interest in us rolling out stop sign camera automated enforcement. So we have signed on to a pilot program. The pilot program will begin this Friday. We'll be installing three. We'll install stop sign camera trailers at three locations. All these locations are inbound. So the one will be at Cherrywood and Breeze Wood coming from 193. Second one will be at Research Road and Ridge Road coming from Agricultural Center. And the third one will be on Southway and Ridge coming from 193. So come Friday, you'll see these trailers, and part of the pilot program includes a landing page where we will share with council footage of individuals that are caught in a in a violation.
So you're going to share it with council, or is it going to be public?
Well, I'll share it with council. If if you want it to be public, there will be nothing private about it, really. Well, it's it's up to council. I will share, I will share the link. If if Mr. Bill Orleans asks for the link, I'll, there wouldn't be any any reason to withhold it.
I'm interested in seeing the photos of of Silky Pope going through those red lights and.
No, I don't believe anyone in this body will will be running any of those stop signs.
And just to clarify, this is not, there will not be any tickets or fines issues. The pilot is just to see what the circumstances, how many people are running the stop line. So there will not be any any fines or any enforcement yet. It's.
There will not be any any fines.
What went with that pilot run?
We we had, the consultant, the consultant said that we can get, gather enough trends on behavior within three days.
Oh.
Right, apparently, they they, and they're, what what informs their their conclusion of this is that the, we are signing on to a pilot that has already been ran in College Park in Berwyn Heights. Berwyn Heights in particular has similarities to the locations that we're looking at, and it took them less than three days to then to create patterns, behavior patterns on their on their intersections.
Tell me the intersections again, Cherrywood and Breeze Wood.
Yes, and I I share those, you know, that because it's good for you all to know, but, you know, maybe, maybe we don't, we we don't, I don't want to market these too too much because I don't want to impact the behavior. Well, we're going to announce it anyway, but, you know, we'll we'll just be.
Make sure I'm getting a email. Are you running so many stop signs that you need to be worried? I don't run stop signs, but on occasion, it could be that I'm rolling, maybe, you know, you know what I mean? I mean.
Yeah, and that's one of the, you know, Mr. Summeron was was sharing some information about just the the threshold, what what constitute, you know, what constitutes actually stop, coming to a complete stop, and those are parameters that can be adjusted. I'm not surprised that College Park and Berwyn Heights have already piloted these, and they're rolling out the.
They wanted to get ahead of Greenbelt.
Exactly, right.
Powering College Park.
The traffic, right. So, Ms. Pompey, the.
Four cities meeting coming up soon, so I won't say anything else.
They're feeding us, so.
They are feeding us.
The locations are Cherrywood and Breeze Wood, Research and Ridge, and Southway and Ridge.
Okay. And you had another one?
Southway and Ridge is really going to light up. That's, that's somebody who walks that way, that, that's what I think, so.
I agree. Uh, let's see, and that's it?
That's my one information item.
Yeah, so just, so there was a Transportation Planning Board meeting today. The only action was creating a, a new Regional Transportation Resilience Subcommittee, which is to, the purpose is to provide a forum and framework for the coordination of transportation resilience planning throughout the National Capital Region, and to continue to incorporate resilience into the National Capital Region Transportation Plan and Transportation Improvement Program. And so the, just looking at community, building community resilience with a focus on equity to better adapt to impacts from natural hazards and potentially in the future, other unforeseen challenges. And this is something that I think, any, we are a member of TPB, so if somebody is interested on this, even though I'm the, the, the member that goes to the Transportation Planning Board, if others were interested. The first meeting will be November fourteenth from two to four. I think it's interesting, I'm not sure I can take something else on, but if that were of interest, I can pass along the information. The other thing, and I already forwarded this, but they are having a Regional Roadway Safety Summit on Thursday, October thirty-first, at the APTA Centennial Center, I don't remember what APTA stands for, in Alexandria, Virginia, and that is also Accessible Hybrid. You can tune in virtually as well, so that also could be interesting. I may try to attend virtually, not sure I'm going to try to go in person. But there were some other interesting briefings, some updates on, from Clark Mercer about the, what, the DMV Moves Program, and then also about some greenhouse gas things. But they were briefings, they were quite interesting, but those were sort of the two action items from the meeting today.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I, I, yeah, Danielle, or Councilmember McKinney?
I just have one item just to share. On Friday, the Council of Governments Farm Policy Committee is doing a, a tour of DC farms, and it's looking at just ways that the city is doing urban agricultural initiatives, using, using it as a way to spur entrepreneurship, looking at gardens and urban farming. And so it is open, people can go and tour. I think they're touring four different sites. I'm going to try to see if I can get to at least one, but that should be interesting, so.
I'm actually planning to pop in on that, because it sounds, it sounds very interesting, just seeing best practices. I, I heard a lot of talk about the, the tour that they did last year out in Virginia, Loudoun County, and just some beautiful sights. And I guess next year will be Maryland. We've got so many resources right here in Prince George's County, so this is very exciting. My information item, I just, I, I had sent out an email asking for questions for tomorrow, and I'd like to ask council if you can look at those and look at the other information that came back and get to me, back to me by tomorrow morning. I'd like to submit about four of those questions. And if there's no other updates, let's, let's call it a night. It's only nine forty, though, it's, you know, we could, we could stretch this out.